Continuation, so I don't have to read this?
You do.
In the quotus of Massachusetts Journal was, Chapter 41, Section 81 T. And Chapter 48, Section 11, notice is hereby given that the Bolton Planner Board will hold the continuation of a public hearing on Wednesday, February 28, 2018, at 7:30 PM. And the board is selecting room in the town hall, 663 Main Street, Bolton, Mass. To hear and act upon the application of WD Bolton LLC for dependent subdivision plan and frontland open space plan residential development fostered for property identified on Bolton assessor's map, 3D as parcels nine and nine A located on Hudson Road in Bolton's residential zoning district. The proposed development titled Keys Farm consists of an 18 lot subdivision.
Good evening.
We have our expert here tonight.
She barely made it last time.
I know, I was like, I had no idea what to ask. Danielle would say something really smart right now.
I don't know if it's even smart, just more geared towards stormonic, but...
All right, so Brandon Ducharme, Ducharme-Dillis, here tonight with Jeff Walker and Jay Cohen of Walker Development. And yeah, at the last meeting, we kind of identified just a few final technical issues to the plans. There was a drainage discussion, and Greg and Patrick had been working with Fred and kind of ironing out those drainage comments. One of the other comments that was made by GTW was regarding the basin down by the front as you enter into the subdivision. We had asphalt chute located right here at the end of the road that basically picked up the storm water and directly deposited into the infiltration for the cement basin here. His comment was, he preferred to see a catch basin with a pipe to get that deep sub catch basin in there. The reason why we went with the asphalt chute was because it kind of took a specialty catch basin in order to make it work based on the elevation of the road to the elevation of the basin.
Yeah, it's shallow catch basin.
Yeah, so we've gone ahead, we've detailed that, and we've added a pipe. Because of that change, we are requesting two additional waivers. I know we voted on the waivers last week, but the two additional waivers pertain to adding that component to the drainage. One is for a pipe other than RCP.
What are they going to be?
It's going to be ADS.
Oh, okay.
And the other is the depth of cover over that pipe. And again, it's shallow, it's just under 2%, but that's kind of what it takes to be able to...
What's the cover over the pipe?
It's less than three feet, but I think it's about one.
It's one foot?
I think it's two feet.
Two feet.
Pull up on the detail.
So is it still a 12 inch pipe or do you have to...
I'd say eight.
So you need a way of emergency for that as well? It's all in one tank section, but...
Correct, yeah, so that's updated on the cover sheet there, yeah.
It's also off the roadway, the whole pipe, just no, not in the road.
So, let me just understand, it's an eight inch pipe?
Yeah.
It has one foot of cover, and what's...
Maybe a little more.
What type of pipe is it? It's an ADS plastic pipe?
Yeah, and I think...
I have a little concern with that.
Well, you have concrete on, I thought you changed it to ADS, but you have concrete on...
Yeah, I saw that too on the plan.
So it says RCP, and I think...
And on the plan, and then you had ADS, but you changed it both to RCP. I don't think they have us reinforced on that.
That's the issue, is I think they had RCP, and then I know...
But I think you went ducted line. I mean, if you've got less than two feet of cover, you really want to go with ducted line.
Okay.
In actuality, I think the subdivision rules and ranks specifically say if you're not using RCP, you have to use ducted line.
Yeah.
So if we go to the ductability, the waiver is...
That I don't know, yeah.
I believe you still need...
You still need a waiver.
I can't imagine you can get two feet.
For the coverage, you're saying?
Probably not for the material, we just need a waiver for the less than two feet of cover, or less than three.
So that's fine, we can go with that.
Yeah, I would just change that to ducted line.
Okay.
I know it's not in the roadway, but still, just if anything drives over that, you'll crack the ADS pipe.
Yeah, it is, sure, so. And then the last couple housekeeping comments pertain to, we've got some additional comments from the fire chief just pertain to, we just used their typical detail, and they've recently gone through it, I think back in December, and they've just kind of updated a lot of those specifications. And it's just, we addressed most of those, and then I think Fred picked up on a couple little things just to change to be in agreement with what their new specifications are.
Where's that horse entry?
So that is right there. Basically, because at the opening year, they had to catch...
You don't have a four pipe, so you just have that over there?
Exactly.
And what's, is that a 12 inch?
12 inch.
12 inch pipe, and that's got two feet of cover?
That has five feet of cover.
Yeah, that's got plenty of, yeah.
The detail shows it down, and you go to the detail sheet.
Oh, okay, yeah.
The actual detail sheet will give you on the inverted end, if I remember correctly, in some left-hand corner, low left.
Yeah, the only pipe that was...
Maybe 6'4" or something.
Eliminate that shot.
Does it have it at some 58?
It says 5.9 inches.
It's 307 at the rim, and the inverse...
Five, so almost six feet to invert.
301.
Yeah. What they have is a three foot to invert minimum, you see that?
Yeah.
I'm asking them to take that off, because they are given an actual...
Oh, yeah.
Or Techme wants three foot minimum to invert, which doesn't work there.
Which makes sense, because it gives you the two feet of cover, but yeah, so...
But that only gives you two feet of cover, not three feet either. So, but they have five feet and six feet to invert, almost.
So there's two cisterns, or there's two taps here?
The fire cistern?
Yeah.
Yeah, just the one cistern.
Oh, with two.
So one's a bit, and one's the side.
And that has what, like, a well with a touch there?
Yeah.
Oh, the well's right there, yeah. And the cisterns would go further than 1,000 feet. Well, how far is it from this house, or the proposed house over here? That's 1,000 feet?
So, the entire length of this is 1,500.
So that's one and a thousand feet to get to here then, right? We're still going by that number? You're not just on the bylaw, right?
Yeah, that new bylaw amendment is 1,000 feet. I don't know how that plays into when we're doing the fire system, subdivision though.
Yeah, it's been, I mean, the reason for it, I mean, obviously, the alternative would be to kind of centrally locate it, but the issue is, is we're trying, if you look at the grade of the road, 8% slope coming up, you know, we don't want the fire truck parking on that grade, so as the road comes up, it levels out up here, which kind of makes sense to put the...
They've seen these plans?
Yeah, so we went over that with them.
But still, it's the bylaw that we can't necessarily waive, right?
But if the fire department's wait, they wait, and they've seen the plan, and it's within the subdivision, I wouldn't really push back on that.
Okay.
I think as long as they're good with it.
Yeah, that's kind of my feeling as well.
Basically, so they have the 1,800 feet hose.
Well, maybe we should look to change that 1,000 foot number to 1,800 feet down or something.
Or even just be 15, I guess, a little bit...
We just changed that number, didn't we?
Well, we, yeah, I mean, we changed, we just did the bylaw here. Whatever, if nobody's complaining, then it's not an issue.
Is there a water source on 85 somewhere, close to the entrance?
Not closer than that.
No.
Yeah, no. New Giver going across the street, it's going to be pretty soon.
Yeah, Fourth Brook on this side.
So it's fine, I mean, if Spencer's okay with it.
Yeah, the only thing that Chief Montrier sent, actually, just today, was a comment about it being multiple tank design. He had some concerns about that, but he doesn't say that he's against it, he just said he has some concerns.
Yeah, that's not, actually, that's not this site.
Oh.
So that was a, that was a spec sheet from Tadmore.
Oh, because he has his Keys Farm up here.
Okay, he might be confused too.
All right, I got totally confused, because this email says Keys Farm.
Yeah.
All right.
So those waivers, you find, was there some way to change that to require?
I think you can, as long as he's going to change it to ducted line, I don't think he needs a waiver for the pipe material.
So that's number, what?
It's 11 and 12 on the waivers here.
Yeah, I think 11 you might be able to eliminate, because if you're not using RCP, you should use ducted line, and he is using ducted line, so I don't think he needs a waiver for the material, but he does for the cover?
The size, it's a minimum of 12 inch diameter.
Oh, and you're using, so, I got you, you're using an eight, so keep it in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's for drain pipe 5A, right?
Correct.
I got that.
And just, sorry, can you point to that again? So it's which one?
So...
It's that, gotcha, just right there, okay.
So we had an asphalt chute.
Okay.
So we already approved 13, it just got moved down on the list, or did it change?
I think it just got moved down the list, yeah.
We approved it. Yeah, yeah, that's what it seemed, but it's just a different number.
This would be easier to claim too, with the catch basin.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah.
Fred, were there any other open items on your end?
Nope, just clarification of some of the fire chief's comments that Brandon already mentioned.
Any other stormwater items?
Nope.
So, so some other items, first of all, so the trails for the open space, did you see the letter from Rebecca?
We did, yeah. So a couple things in regards to that, kind of a rough sketch here, but, you know, what I try to do is kind of look at where it is they're looking for. So this is Hudson Road here. This is, there's a berm here for this detention pond, and what they'd like to do is, this is the Danforth Lane, conservation land, they would like to be able to get access to basically connect these two open space developments, which we...
And we said they weren't directly connected previously, right?
Right, so to come in, something like this, to come in, come down, the accessway out through here, and then have a trail between lots 16 and 17 to come down and get over open space one.
You're going across what line, so?
You're gonna have to, yep. So in the past, they've done that, the Boy Scouts have done a couple projects, they do foot bridges, or something like that. I mean, the only other way would be go right through everybody's backyard.
Yeah, sure.
And that's really what we're up against, and kind of, we talked about it last time, you know, that's kind of what I looked at here. You know, this is an existing house that's close, you know, this, this house, and again, these are just proposed houses.
So this is Danforth, right?
Correct.
That's an existing house?
Yeah.
Is that, is this a butter scene?
No, so...
Where's their land ending?
It's right on the law line, basically. So kind of the answer to the comment is, is we understand what the commission's concern is in that's connecting them, and what we'd like to do is kind of leave it that as we come up with more definitive locations of these homes, and as we design these, looking to have the flexibility, we will connect all this open space somehow, but we'd kind of like to look at, look at it in the field.
Yeah, this, this I'm worried about, because this is really close to that house.
Right.
That's, that's...
So we think something, we could condition that, you know, we'll look to provide the through access, but kind of do in the field with the Trails Committee at that time, and once we get a better handle on what's going to happen up here.
Like if these houses don't end up right here, maybe it makes sense to go up the road a little and then cut over.
Could, yeah, yeah. Then you're going to be close to these, so I mean, it's something that I guess we're going to have to kind of look at.
Well, however the land is, and whatever trees are left and stuff, however you can hide it the best, but I'm fine with just leaving kind of like a provision that we'll figure it out.
Yeah. Will there be, when you work with the Trails Committee, will you also be notified, like, existing abutters to...
That's what we did, I mean, the only example I can use is with Tadmore.
That's what I was thinking, it would be good to get some of their input.
We got the neighbors, you know, obviously the developer, we've got Trails Committee, Conservation, everybody out there, and we kind of worked out all these issues.
Yeah, so if you can just include the abutters as well, with that decision, I think that makes sense.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, so you can word that out, okay. The other issue is the front walkway, which I think we're fine in waving, but is it, you know, fee in lieu of we should talk about?
Okay.
For the mobility fund?
Yeah.
Have you guys thought about that?
We have, we've discussed it, and I've provided some, you know, initial information to Jeff and JJ, and if you guys want to comment on that.
Obviously, the lower number, the better, but, you know, $10,000 was fair.
So the last time we calculated this was for 649 Main Street, the concrete way there, we approved the frontage on the sidewalk. Fred was kind enough to provide us with some numbers for what it would cost for linear foot, which is in your packet, and since that project wasn't that old, I just thought we could go on with those numbers.
Which one is it?
It's basically Fred giving us numbers for an asphalt sidewalk and a concrete sidewalk. I think the, yeah, they sort of went somewhere in between those two numbers, calculating the one for 649 Main Street, looking at whatever the linear footage for frontage was.
So what is the linear footage?
I don't know, I was hoping we could.
Yeah, it's probably about a little over 900 feet. So in terms of what we're using, and obviously, it'd be consistent with some of the other sidewalks that were provided, you know, would be, if we were to construct it, we'd be looking at asphalt.
I mean, that number is what, 36,000? If you use the highest number, it couldn't have 18, if you go in 20. So, I mean, this, they emailed me up here, I don't know if you guys thought it, but it's a two inch thick by two minutes sidewalk, four feet wide with eight inch gravel basis, 17 per linear foot, and then four inch thick concrete, that's 40. I don't, so what, you're saying you just want to stay $20, or?
Well, I think you...
Well, if we were going to construct it, which I think would be a little...
They're saying that they'd do it instead of concrete.
They would be doing, oh, okay.
Just given the, obviously, concrete would be a lot more expensive.
So what is that worth?
The first one is 15,300.
The cheapest one? What's this, this is just a different...
These two different costs from two different contractors, isn't it?
Right, one was from R S Means, and then the other was from an actual contractor.
There's one, one's...
Yeah, I think to be fair, 649 Main Street had less frontage, so, and they donated $10,000, so for this project, they're going to have more sidewalk, more frontage, which should be something higher for, for being fair across the board.
This is at $17,000. The 15,000, yeah.
So 16, I'd do what, minus 900?
14. Do what? 15, 16, that is in the concrete, which they said they're not going to do.
Yeah. Yeah, so 649 did 15, would we say 15, or?
I would say 15,000.
I think 15,000's a fair number.
Yeah, I mean, that's based off of the lowest estimate for...
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah?
Okay.
And that's just using the lowest number.
No, I hear, I, rules, rules. I appreciate it.
We made good use of the money.
I know, I hope so.
We probably should come up with like a standard, I mean, because...
I think, I mean, I think this is a good way to do it.
But no one's ever going to say, I would construct concrete.
Well, then we can just require the asphalt and...
I mean, it just, I mean, they may construct concrete, but no one would give a fee in lieu of for concrete.
All right, so that's settled then. And then I wanted to ask about the affordable section. So there would be two units, we talked about that front housing duplex and that being acceptable for us?
Right.
I don't know if that's in, is that in the...
It is in the decision right now, I think the applicant is still thinking about it, if that was really a feasible option for them. So I didn't know, you know, maybe it's something where we asked for that, and then if it doesn't work, you know, if it doesn't work out, we, them say we have the option of a fee in lieu, in accordance with our...
Or just doing individual units if they really want to do that, right?
Or, yeah.
What are your thoughts on the affordable part?
I mean, we still have to look into it, we still haven't done, I guess, a thorough evaluation and put plans together and understand, can we even save the house? So as far as doing a duplex there?
I mean, I'm fine with not, I'm fine with not saving the house and just building something that looks similar.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we can look at, the way I was looking is, honestly, I don't have, it'd be hard for me to say one way or the other, they both, I think financially work out about the same, so it's not necessarily that, I just want to make sure, you know, that could be a possibility.
You're saying the fee in lieu of?
Fee in lieu of, or building a duplex.
I mean, ideally, we prefer to get the affordable houses, you know, we always get the fee in lieu, but it'd be nice if we can get...
To actually have something.
To actually have it would be great. And to be honest with you, I'm totally in favor of saving the historical structures, just because I know that's a historical commission that would want it.
They could do a...
They've been very...
Right, but, I mean, it sounds like it's a pretty big disrepair, yeah.
I mean, it's bad, that's why we were, I mean, we've even had conversations, like, until the town says you have to go on the property, you need to sign something before you go on the property and go on that house, because it's dangerous.
It's unsafe.
It's unsafe, so.
Simply put.
I, you know...
I see head nods.
Yeah. So, yeah, legitimately, I mean, one thing we could look at doing is building something very similar.
I mean, I'm okay with that. I think Martha even was relenting, saying, well, if you could save something, you know...
Yeah, but it's, I mean, if you go out there, I mean, it's, it's, there's nothing spectacular about it, I guess, or anything, like...
Besides the history.
Just besides that.
The bones are unique, but the skin that was put over the bones has fallen apart. It's just, there's nothing, there's nothing there to say.
I mean, personally, I would love to see affordable added, and if you could do something similar, you know, in style, and create a duplex that doesn't necessarily look like a duplex, I mean, that would be awesome.
Here's the thing, though, I don't know that they can necessarily build a duplex, unless it's a historical structure. For our bylaw, we don't allow for multi-family, there is a caveat there if it's an older building.
You could save, you could save the bones of it.
I thought in Golden Run, then we were talking about building a duplex, and then the neighbors kind of shut it down, or something like that.
Yeah, I don't know how they were going about zoning.
Why don't we, I mean, like I said, what I would like to do, and, you know, keep going, because I think more investigation needs to go into this if it can happen, is say, listen, we're going to try to save some of the historic piece, and maybe that solves your problem, create that into a duplex. If we all, like, can't do it, then we can just go to the fee in lieu of, but that's our primary goal. I think it would be great, right? Having, keeping that old house adds to the charm of the, of the...
And it's visible too.
It's visible. So don't have a problem with that, and like I said, financially, I don't think it really makes that much of a difference either way.
In Sterling, how I got past the historical piece of similar situation was I stripped the house and kept the bones of the house, reinforced it, brought new structure in to shore it up, and then it was basically a new house, but it...
With the foundation portions of it?
Yeah, well, actually, we jacked it up and poured a new foundation, and we, you know...
Modified foundation?
It was excessive, but it worked for the town and it worked for us at the time.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I'm hoping, I would love to get a couple affordable units, so.
So how does it work, I mean, with, if you determine, I mean, like you said, if you can make it work, great, but if you can't, how does that then do?
Well, I think just looking at the draft decision, I mean, if we could have both those options available, I mean, obviously, there's a trigger as far as construction and occupancy, we're going to figure that out.
That's what we did for Tadmore, we gave them two options basically. They could fulfill the first one, then maybe do the other.
But do they have to give us, like, some reason, or like cost, or anything like that, to show us why they couldn't fulfill the first one, or how's it work?
You can do that for Tadmore, but in this instance, I mean, you certainly could, if that's something that the board wants to review.
I think based on the bylaw, basically, I think we get to essentially pick, you know, but we're trying to basically...
Yeah, you got...
We need the two paths that we're not awaiting, obviously.
Well, I think you can request it, but the board has to approve it, and it has to be for, for good reason, it can't just be, well, we don't want to build it, so it's going to be sort of economic...
Well, and also, the new bylaw also calls for, it's not PFD, it's P as you go for...
Yeah, they include that, but there's an increment.
For, for building permits, right?
If you want to.
For building permits, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, because what happened at Century Mill was, it came down to like last one, they're like, you have to, like, somebody wants to move in, so if you don't approve it now, then they put us in the position of being bad guys, you know?
No, it's not on the file.
So, yeah, we write it up, though.
So does the board want to write it in a way that the initial option is to do the historical structure with the duplex, and for some reason, you can't do that if it is economically invisible, do you want them to come back to the board and discuss whether it's a fee in lieu or construction of the actual units? Do you want to do it that way? Or if you want, I mean, it seems silly to give them three different options, it seems like we should, I don't know, it's up to the board, but...
What's the number basically now for affordable?
Affordable? I don't, I don't have...
I had it, I had it, it's like 180, right?
I think it was like 180, yeah.
That was last year, I don't know what it is currently.
Okay.
It's probably around there, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's sort of, we're thinking, so it's 360, because if we do all, it's going to be the two lots, right?
Right.
So it's 360, and so if we pay 360, then we can sell the lot, and the lot's probably worth $200,000, so we lose 160.
Do you just have to pay as you go for building permits?
No, I get that, I'm just looking at these two options to show you, then, so if we then try to build it, we could build, you know, that could cost a half a million dollars to build the duplexes and save it, you sell those for 180, you're still losing right about the same number, that's why I tell you financially...
So that's what you're saying financially, it's about the same.
It's about the same, now, if we find out, gosh, to really do this, it's going to cost us $750,000 to save it?
Yeah, and I think, I think, like, I'm completely fine with you crunching the numbers later and saying, you know what, it was really not feasible, but I guess I just would like to see some backup before that next fee in lieu was...
Well, that's what I'm saying, you can write it in a way that they actually have to come back to you, and they have the option.
I think if we could simply say that if we can show the cost valuation is no greater than, or...
Yeah, yes, exactly.
Then, yeah.
That, that would be fine with me.
Right, so, so the fee in lieu automatically kicks in at some point or something?
Yeah, once we go, once we hit that number...
As long as you show the hardship, the finances.
Yeah.
That's fine.
That'd be fair.
That would be good.
Are you selling off the whole property? Is that, is it for sale sign up there, right?
There's, well, there's an option, because there's a couple developers that are builders that might be interested, so we don't know exactly how we're doing it. I'm planning on doing it all.
Building?
That's the plan, but people can change that.
Do we ever ask you the average house size?
We don't have it yet, but it was only going to be, I think, the 2,800, 3,000 square... square.
Oh, really? That's pretty good.
Yeah, no, I think.
We're not trying to get million, we, we want to keep the price.
Yeah.
I mean, saying, seven hundred and fifty, eight hundred thousand dollar house was horrible, now it's great, but it's kind of where we're at.
Yeah. Yeah, that's good. Uh, I think I have any votes on the board, any more questions? Do we have anything left open, or any reason not to close this hearing?
Did the board want to quickly go through the decisions?
Oh, sure.
The draft decision?
Yeah.
And then the board does have to, to accept those two additional waivers.
Yep, okay, you want to just do that first?
Sure.
So, somebody want to make a motion to approve those, eleven and twelve?
I'll make a motion to approve waivers eleven and twelve that have been added to the Keys Farm subdivision, definitive subdivision plans.
Second.
On my favor?
Aye.
All right. So, I guess the special first. I'll look through it quickly, and you have all the standard stuff in here, construction times, and, was that any, I don't want, then the definitive?
That's the definitive.
Yeah.
But, yeah, the facture really pertains to the open space.
Oh, okay.
Where is the, like, is recognition regard to the trails?
There is, and so this will have to be modified, because I got pretty specific as to what the conservation committee.
Yep.
So, I will, conditions.
Number five.
Number five, and then, oh, and number six we should talk about as well, the requirement of, you know, entry sign.
So this would be the edge of that property?
So basically, I'll revise this and, and say that, you know, the trail, the location of the trail is, and it's will be determined at a later date.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we don't want to say.
At the approval of, yeah. Conservation and Trail Committee, and I was leaving that.
That's good, yeah, go for number six.
Um, so for number six, again, I'll take out the, the conditions that talk about the locations, and just say it will be determined at a later date, but that's, that's standard to require an entry sign, they're, they're small, they're, you know, it's not a huge ask.
Uh, we talked, is it in this document where we talk about ownership of, like, the septic or the well area in the open space, except the other, we said the definitive, talk about that, whoever, where, you know, the easement, the, they own it, they own it versus.
You know what, I don't.
So, I think, I know, we're talking about, like, a zone one in the open space?
Yeah.
Like, like Century Mill?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was only because they had a public water supply.
Okay.
And in order to control that public water supply, they put it in the open space, so this subdivision is all onsite, individual well and septic.
Oh, okay.
So there isn't any wells or septic proposed.
Oh, okay, so there's nothing in the open space, all right. So there's nothing, yeah, so there's nothing there.
Yeah, there's no public water supply, so you don't have the treatment.
And then, all the drainage system will be part of the roadway, which will eventually be public anyway.
Yeah, which is easy, right?
Yeah. Okay, I have no issues with this.
And then just condition number seven, conservation, you know, if, if you get some assistance with clearing a trail through the open space once, that would be great, just some brush clearing, just assisting with that. We require that for Tadmore as well.
I mean, in wet areas.
You say a cleared trail, what do you?
Brush clearing, likely.
So no big trees.
Okay, this is something that the conservation would then go back and do themselves, but it's, it's one of those things, you know, if, if we could get some assistance, that would be.
Yeah, it's certainly not cutting out trees or anything like that, or anything.
No, it's, it's pretty minor.
Okay.
Does that make sense, Reagan, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just clearing.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just going off of what conservation's told me, so.
And, yeah, anything else about the phosphor special permit?
Do you, I'm sorry, do you want to add something in there that, and shall provide something on the wetlands?
On like a flood bridge or something? Or just access across the wetlands?
Just provide access so it's left and right, how it will be done?
In coordination with the conservation, because I would hate for them to have to permit something that they have no control over.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Um, yeah, all right, so I can add that in.
I mean, some of that would potentially be part of that, you guys got order of conditions, right?
We filed a notice of intent, yeah, so that.
So that could just be wrapped into the order of conditions?
It, it could, depending on the timing, yeah, so.
All right, the definitive. So the waivers, did you put the new waivers yet?
I did, yeah, I just had to update the one with that color iron.
And then saving the these trail, please.
Oh, yes, that, make sure that they're.
Thirteen, fourteen, fifty.
Yep. And then I did condition, and I did have a couple outstanding comments from your last review letter that, that are in here. Right, do you still have some outstanding comments? Is that correct?
The first one was a vauxtechny, voice century, right, we see the double, feet timbered.
Um, let's see, is there one over here? Yes.
Okay, and the second one has been taken care of.
Okay.
And then the other ones were all fired upon.
Oh, so then you're, you're pretty much set then?
Right, the fire department, there's some clarification of the fire department, so.
Does that need to be conditioned?
Um.
I mean, I have a condition in there that the fire department.
I wasn't even in there, right? What, what do you have, I'm sorry?
I have another condition in there that says the fire department has to approve and sign off on the fire system, basically.
I'm making sure, so, I'm all set with mine, and that comes with the fire department.
All right.
Is there anything in here about damage to the road from offloading of equipment?
Yes.
Where's that, is that in nineteen, the free?
No, that's up, of course, we didn't have the decision when we talked about performance guarantees, number, number four.
So are we gonna, spread or somebody, you're gonna record the state of the road, you know, prior?
Or subdivision rules, right, because I think it's, it's either the applicant, or I think it's DPW, actually.
Okay, so somebody's gonna do that.
Yeah.
So it says Main Street.
I know, we ran and caught that as well, so I've, I've updated that already.
And where do you, I mean, I forget, you're, you're for us, you're for us for so many subdivisions, for this particular one, where do you plan on offloading all your equipment?
So we talked about that a little bit, where we have the existing house and driveway.
Oh, yeah, that's right, okay.
So, and this, usually in the subdivisions, it's woodlands, so as soon as the main clearing equipment shows up, there's really nowhere to dump everything off, which is why they're offloading that street, so. In this situation, I think, you know, they'll be able to pull right in and offload on site, so.
They posted bond for road damage for Houghton, and I think it was pretty minimal, I think, I want to say like seven thousand dollars if he posted just in case, so, but that can be determined prior to construction, so.
So, do we close and then vote on means, or vote on means and close?
We have to close the hearing first and then vote.
All right, anything else before we close it? Nothing else, so good.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Take it.
On my favor?
Aye.
All right. Just any motions to approve, please?
Hold on one minute, let me just write that in there.
Prove using the conditions we discussed.
So make a motion to approve the phosphor special permit conditions, as noted here, and the definitive subdivision approval conditions.
Second. On my favor?
Aye.
And as amended for discussion, sure.
All right.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
Have fun building.
When do you potentially anticipate starting construction?
Tomorrow. No, no, I mean, things always take longer than you think, the weather, yeah, probably in April, May, May, probably, honestly, is.
No.
All right.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Chris, you here for Von Hill?
I am.
Okay. Motion, quick. In Quonset, Massachusetts?
You go.
Oh, you think?
I always ask it, you always say yes.
And it's. Um, I don't think we do in this instance, because he's withdrawing his application.
So, yeah, Gary Scholm, Michael Spillers, one oh five Van Hill Road, just formally requesting to run my, the application for the common drive, one oh five Van Hill Road.
So we wore you down, huh?
It's not gonna work, yeah. Yeah, the cost would just not, it's not ready to continue on.
That's too bad, because, I mean, I mean, it would have been nice to fix that area on your.
Oh, my God, that's what's happening, so.
Unfortunately, the problem still exists now.
Yep, yep.
And we just need to vote, vote to.
We need a vote, and then the other outstanding item was the peer review fund.
Yeah, so I would like to discuss that, because that was never brought to my attention, that there was an overage until after the fact, so typically, in my world, presenting a price to a customer, I show them the number upfront, exceeds that, before I go further, I speak to the customer. I was unaware beyond his charges at that point, you sent me an email saying that there's going to be some further money needed prior to further review, which that's the way it should have been, and then after that, you sent me an email saying, unfortunately, I miscalculated, much money is owed to peer review prior, so that was a little startling.
So just to bring the board up to speed, so, an additional one thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars was required for the peer review services that were conducted to date, so that's, that's what's outstanding at the moment. Yeah, and I apologize, and I agree, we should have brought to that, probably brought that to your attention sooner, Fred and I talked about that, and, you know, we're gonna work on that in the future. Unfortunately, you know, it, it kind of is what it is.
Well, I don't think that's is what it is, when you knew, someone knew I was over the amount that was needed to be charged, I should have been told before I moved, you know, I would move forward, I certainly would have made some judgment call on my part, too. So I don't think that's right, that it just is what it is.
So the, the way that the initial amount is covered is through the application fee?
Yep.
And this particular instance, I basically used the entire application fee for the peer review services.
Sure, understandable.
This was above and beyond the application fee.
Understandable, someone should have brought to my attention before this.
I, I'm not, I'm not arguing, I agree with you.
So my argument is that I don't feel that I should just say, oh, it's okay, you know, I mean, that's a, what, you know, eighteen hundred dollars, does anyone want to throw that out on the floor and say it is what it is?
What are the options, are there, are there?
I, I, I don't know, there's, I mean, it's a bill that's owed, I, you know.
So this is what you sent to me, the Bolton Planning Board will need an additional one thousand forty dollars to continue the peer review, which is understandable, that's what I should have received. And below, also, I need three hundred and eighty dollars to pay invoices incurred to date, whatever that is, I'm not sure, that's how it should be handled, then, following emails, unfortunately, I miscalculated, so I should be told prior to be in charge of something, that this is gonna be additional money's need to proceed with this project, so I don't feel that it is what it is is the right answer for me. I mean, would you guys all bring your car to get it fixed and?
Yeah, no.
That would translate to, you know, save us a lot of money with this much money?
I mean.
I act, and they come to me and said, Gary, you, beyond what we budgeted, you owe this, you okay with it? I am, go forward, that's how the world works around.
So, how does it, you know, standardly, we kind of bill as we go for a project?
Like, for example.
We, we collect ahead until a certain amount?
I try to, I, there's a lot of accounts, I try to stay on top of it, and, and I think moving forward, Fred and I are gonna try to be better on that in communication and what's getting spent. For example, Keys Farm, they also went over, it also went over, and I had to request additional funds, and they paid it, and it's, I mean, it's.
But, but I guess what should happen is, once you hit the limit, we say, well, we can't review anymore.
I agree, and that's what we're gonna do moving forward.
But now a bill is?
And now a bill, unfortunately, I'm just in a situation where a bill has been accrued, and I don't have funds to pay it.
Right.
And I don't feel I should be the guy to, to make an example of, because.
Yeah, I don't know.
If I'm already spending thirty thousand dollars in engineering, it's wasted, so I don't feel that I'm obligated to pay that.
I really.
I'm aware of it, then I can make a decision, I can move forward or not, but to be told after the fact.
I mean, it's not like a bill that's just disappearing, unfortunately, it's something we have to pay, and there's no, like, reserve fund that we have to take it out of, right?
Not that I'm aware of, I can, I can talk to our county administrator about it, get his, yeah, I can talk to Donna and get his opinion.
Your concern is understandable.
No, I, I, I completely agree with you, you know, so.
Can, can we just ask Erica to?
Sure.
Let me just talk to, yeah, talk to our county administrator and, and see if there's a, an alternative.
Maybe people can split the difference or something, even, what's, what's the difference, though?
This is the first time this has happened, so.
Let's see what our, let's see what the options are, let's see what the options are and go from there.
I mean, I, I think we understand where you're coming from, since we don't know where the money.
Sure.
And we don't have that decision, I think, to make.
I don't, I don't have any, until we have.
Until we have.
Paying what, a bill.
Yeah, we don't have a piggy bank to just take it out of.
And as well as I don't just have an open check.
No, I completely understand, completely understand.
Yeah, I think that's the best way to talk to Donna.
And then we'll get back to you.
Okay, that's fair.
Okay.
Sorry, what I'm having?
Oh, I'll make a vote to accept the withdrawal of the application for the common drive at one oh five Von Hill Road.
Second. On my favor?
Aye.
All right.
Well, thank you, sorry it didn't work out.
Yeah, any idea what you're gonna do with the?
Get my deposit back and, like, move on.
Yeah, so, yeah, just gonna resell the land?
It's, it's not mine, I had another deposit of getting, you know, I tried to negotiate with the owner and.
Also, it's contingent, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and it just, she, the owner wasn't gonna, by just the point where it was feasible, so.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Good night. Thanks, Fred.
Okay, take care, Gary. All right. So, next up, planning board to appoint the associate under position. So.
Can I?
So, we met Sean, Andy, and James, I think we all did, you might not have.
I didn't, I met one gentleman.
Sean.
Who was here on the.
Yeah, Sean.
Sean, yes.
So I guess, I'll just give a rundown of them. Sean, Sean is an engineer type, he's been to a couple meetings, he seems, he seems like you do a fine job, you know, he's similar to all us, same thing with Andy Roberts, he's an engineering type person as well, and I think you do a fine job. James has a construction background, and we don't really have that on the board, so I, I think they would all do a great job, but my opinion is that we would select James just because he has, I think, some knowledge that we don't have, because we got, Mark's an engineer, I'm an engineer, you're an engineer, you are.
He's yours, then.
And you're a genius, and you're a genius, and you're a person, but we don't really have somebody like that on the construction side, so I mean.
I just wanna let you know I'm right here, so. I actually got rid of the beard, so.
Well, luckily they're saying that.
I was gonna say, before you go.
So you're James?
Yes.
See, I was saying that, I didn't even know you were here.
Yeah, sorry, thank you, I appreciate the kind words.
Well, I wasn't looking.
They tell right away, don't worry about it.
So far away, I can't see distances anymore. But yeah, so I think we should go with James, just because I think he brings something different to the table, not that there's anything wrong with Sean and Andy, and if in a spot and open up in the future, I would definitely recommend that they come back out, but that's my opinion. Any other thoughts? I agree?
Yep, I agree as well, I noticed you were here, James, I noticed James. Actually been sitting through a lot of our long meetings as well, I know, I know the other folks came too, and so, you know, I agree.
I am gonna defer on this one, just because I haven't been able to meet James or Andy, but I'm completely fine with going with whatever you guys recommend.
You got a motion?
Motion to nominate James Barr for the position of associate member of the planning board.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, great.
Cool, thank you.
Great, welcome aboard.
To make it super official, it has to go before selectment, but, yeah.
When's your next meeting?
I will find out, I don't know there in Saturday.
So that should be before ours, which is the 14th. And the way, I think we've talked about this, the way the associate works is, like, tonight you would actually be a voting member, because there's only four people here.
And on the 14th, you'll potentially be a voting member, because I won't be here.
So that's how it works, you're kinda like the stand-in, but, yeah. But, I mean, you have full right to, you know, speak and talk and ask questions and everything, just if five of us are here, then... And typically, the way it works is, if somebody does leave, kinda, you know, like Peter just did, kinda, it's like it's like the jump in point to be on the board, so.
Now, like I said, I have a little bit of background with this stuff, so however all this, all this works, so.
You're welcome.
Thank you, good to be aboard.
Is this person here for this?
We have some here, yeah. Well, we're early. Yeah, because we have 10 minutes.
We have, yeah, we have 50 things to sign, so I don't need that. First up, we still need to sign a decision for Keys Farm, so let me grab. There's two different, there should be 50 altogether here.
Sign that, and a tad more.
The ones for the...
This is gonna make for a riveting television.
This is Keys Farm, right?
That is Keys Farm, I'm gonna write it down. We must sign up on that one.
Should I date on my line or not?
Yeah, that would be a great, you know, I really think it'd create free copies of this, this is the withdrawal application, yeah, the request for withdrawal. This is 105, let me just print two more.
Yeah, I'm at the marches, I had a hearing here missing on Wednesday. And actually, on the 21st, I was supposed to be in Boston, talking in Clinton, and I I went to my boss, I was like, so, like, this is the first time I actually had three hearings.
So are you empathetic for the people on the other side of the table, because of running around?
Yes, yes, but, uh... Well, and most of my hair, most of my hair is always Kong Kong.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I do the environmental permitting, though.
One time here. Now that this one's gone, I don't have to get these 50-page papers anymore. I just, I have to just recycle them.
Why not?
Yeah, that's what I do.
Oh, I still have, well, because that's what I look at, you know, so I still have my notes.
I mean, a lot of it's like alien script to us.
Yeah, no, I have all my notes.
No, no, if you had, like, you know, a circuit design or something like that, and I would be like, oh, yeah, great.
That would be great to me.
It's like all these little notations that you're like, oh, that means a 12-inch cap. We're killing time signing stuff. Where's the best place to hang?
Oh, you don't like my new house, yeah. That table right there, I can set it up right here.
Donald's first to sign while he's setting up, or?
Um, there's, she's a friend, maybe an hour after, that might be, yeah. Why don't we do Longdale, that one's relatively easy.
She's trying to save him, so. Special pens for this?
Yeah, flip them around.
And all the other sign copies.
I don't smell a fresh mildew.
Mildew.
Not quite the mimeograph from El Noguero, but.
I have a box here, something that I lifted up, to get this to turn on.
Date approved. This looks like some past dated, but.
I'll fill that part in, you just have to sign, I still have the date.
Okay, so one each?
Yeah.
Just two?
That's Longdale, that's a really, that was that shared, that became a common, so there were only two sheets.
So one of each?
About to get done, in six weeks, we're very busy.
Do you have a... So who's thinking of?
We don't really know, I mean.
Should Jennifer?
Yeah, Tony Jacobson. Yeah, I think she's in panic mode at the moment.
Yeah.
So much going on.
There's so much, I mean, we have two 40B projects that might be on the board.
Oh, the one on Still River?
There's one on Still River and one on South Bolton.
Where on South Bolton?
It's down from the intersection of Spectacle Hill, like on that corner.
Oh, boy. It's a congested area. Maybe there's a lot of that. Yeah, but, you know, so what do you do for that? You don't do anything, right?
I still, I do the same, what I, what I, it's just, you guys.
Just with the CDA?
Yeah, yeah, same thing.
Yeah, perfect. Thanks for having me, I'm Al Futterman from the Nash River Watershed Association. There's no action needed tonight, this is just informational. You'll get a sense in these 12 slides of what this project is about and where we're at in it, which is like tomorrow, the stewardship plan, which I see is a major, if not the most salient point in the whole three-year study, will be bound tomorrow. So it's available online now, but tomorrow, we're gonna tease it out, so it's exciting. This is Partnership Wild and Scenic River, you'll see how that's distinguished from one of the mill of Wild and Scenic. We're talking about three rivers. We got 11 communities who share a riverfront on either the Nash or the Squanaco or the Nissetisit. It was Congresswoman Songas' idea, quite a few years even before 2015, when it finally got through Congress, to begin the study. She had experience with the sub-baryasid Concord River, which you may know close by, is a wild and scenic river, and she wanted to replicate that somewhere, and this is where we focused on. So to become this congressionally authorized thing called Wild and Scenic River, you have to have both eligibility and suitability. Eligibility refers to whether you have the resources that are of such significance that we'll call it national significance. And you only need one, but we feel we have three. Suitability refers to whether the host communities, those 11 communities, are welcoming and have shown that they're sort of friendly to this sort of thing. So it's 50 years this year that Wild and Scenic has been around, and there's over 200 of them throughout the country. The majority of them, early on, were out west, big tracks, big rivers, federally owned. It's different here in the east, so it's called Partnership Wild and Scenic, because we're dealing with private land, so it's really, it's a different beast. You have three years to do the study, and we're just about there. And as I say, it's the river stewardship plan that is the primary product that we've been working on. So each of the boards' selectmen back in 2015 chose a representative and an alternate, as they have here in Bolton. You also have other entities on that study committee, which are the National Park Service, of course, and us, the National Watershed Association. You also have a couple of state entities and a couple of federal entities, US Fish and Wildlife Services there, because of the Otsco National Wildlife Refuge, which takes up about eight miles of our study area. And then others participate as well. This is the narrative, the next slide's a map. But you have the main stem where the north and the south branches come together in Lancaster. It shoots north up to the state line, that's where we cut it off before it got through the city of Nashua. That wouldn't have been appropriate. All of the Squanaco River and all of the Nissetisit from its headwaters in Brookline to where it meets the Nashua in Pepperell. So the main stem flows from south to north, the tributaries flow from northwest to southeast. So those, the eligibility, when I said you have resources, the parlance the National Park Service uses is outstandingly remarkable resource values, so if you go to plan ORRV is the acronym. We led off with biodiversity, that takes up the most of the plan, then you have recreational and scenic as a separate ORRV, and finally, historical and cultural is the third ORRV. And we include how the Nashua, which had been the most polluted rivers in the country, has made this amazing comeback, and now we're considering for Wild and Scenic Rivers stats. So that alone, we think of as national, if not international, significance, and you may know Maryam Stoddard's story, which we highlight in the plan. So it gives the towns opportunity to work together, the National Park Service provides, you know, the expertise and the funding to do what we did, which was to write the plan. And I'm gonna hit on those notes, when we speak of the plan, we speak about it being voluntary and locally determined, locally controlled, locally driven, et cetera. And even if we don't get to Wild and Scenic River designation, we still have the plan. Plan's done, we can implement it if we so choose.
Can I just ask you to say, the plan's done, you can implement, what is it you would be implementing?
So the stewardship plan that I've been referring to, and I'll give you the URL where you can look at it tonight, if you so chose. The way it's structured is we kind of describe the resources that we have, and then we have an action plan, sort of your goals, objectives, action strategies, a bulleted kind of thing, and those are like recommendations, and we could do this, we could do that. So it's 300 pages of that. So this allows to get grant money and stuff? It could, that's the fourth bullet there, which is that not only do Wild and Scenic Rivers receive what has been historically on average about $170,000 a year, but on your local grants, if you're applying for a grant, it has a checkoff box, are you a Wild and Scenic River town? You check that off, you get more points. And perhaps it will be answered in the next few slides furthermore, but if not, we'll come back to it. The second slide is quite important, it is what the Wild and Scenic was kind of originally set up to do, is to prohibit new federally licensed dams. Harmful diversion speaks to things that they do out west, you know, irrigation channels and levees. Those sort of things do have a oftentimes negative impact on the water resource, which is what the legislation focuses on the river. Nothing on, you know, just literally the banks. Can I ask you something? So that in Pepperell? Yeah. That dam there, that's this river, right? Yes, it is. It's always like disgusting there, like. Yeah, it's the water chestnuts. Is that what it is? Yeah. Because we ride that bike trail all the time. In the fall. Yeah. Is that something, something like that you're trying to prevent? You know, at this point, you have to deal with it. Right. You can't prevent it. Yeah, but I'm saying something to do.
Right, in the future, yes.
Hugely, it's extraordinarily expensive, because it's out of control, you can't deal with it in handful, and when we first kind of came to our attention, which was about eight years ago, it was 40 acres, now it is about 100 acres of it. Of water, that's what it is, water chestnut, all that? I mean, it looks like sludge, pretty much. The leaves at the top die off, and that's what you're smelling. Oh, okay. And it floats down and piles up at the dam. Yeah. So it's volkoo bucks to get rid of it. And we tried it for like a year or two with state money, and then the money went away, and that wasn't sufficient. So that money, would it go towards that? Very well couldn't be absolutely have targeted, given the plan, that the money could go there.
And there are grants out there too for removal of dams.
That one's not going away, because it's a FERC licensed hydro power dam. Oh, so it's actively being used? Yes, and there is a slide here that says no impact on existing dams, which is the case, but you can't build a new dam that is federally licensed, federally permitted, or federally funded. And if you're doing a hydro dam, it's gonna do, it's gonna be one of that licensing. I didn't realize it was still actively being used. Yes, it's gone through, it's third ownership, just recently. The third bullet point is that what we have, that study committee, when, if and when we get to designation, would morph into, here, we're calling it a coordinating council. I think stewardship council is probably what it will become, should we get there, and again, locally based, of course. So no federal acquisition of land, it becomes an affiliate of the National Park Service system, not a national park. Doesn't change anything on land use at the local level. No impact on existing dams, no effect on hunting and fishing, no required public access. So this is the most important slide, because this is where people oftentimes get tripped up. They'll, for example, dive into the legislation from 1968, and they'll encounter things that do speak to federal acquisition, because it was on federal holdings at the time, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a different beast, the Partnership Wild and Scenic is a different beast.
It does require more environmental permitting, though, if you were to touch it at all, or do anything.
Well, other than like a dam, if a project is being proposed that is, would be considered to have some harmful impacts, the stewardship council could write a letter to the permitting entity to look for some mitigation that would reduce those harmful effects. And the bulk of what we're talking about are bridge replacements and road crossings, because that's where infrastructure touches.
Yeah, because I've done a lot of those permits, and whenever we have a scenic or wildlife, you know, we check that up and make sure we're abiding by any of them requirements.
Yeah, but what I think I'm most familiar with is them, Suasco, when they had to do some work on a historical bridge, and the National Park Service, and that stewardship council.
And I'm not saying this bad, I'm, you know, it's good to put those measures in place to protect it, so I wasn't saying one way or the other.
And the only caveat is, it doesn't, what we do is comment, we can't protect it, it's really, you know. So for example, the pipeline comes up a lot, because it was gonna affect the headwaters of the Nissetisit, that northeast pipeline. So we were commenting on it even during the study, it went away. We wouldn't have stopped the pipeline, but we might have gotten them to do horizontal directional drilling as opposed to right across.
Yeah, instead of open trench or something like that.
So I think this is our last slide, we have two subcommittees, we're doing what we're doing here, I think you're the last of the 11 planning boards. I'm going to, gone to all the CONCOMs. We've obviously been to the boards to select them once or twice already. We've reached out to historical societies, and historical commissions, et cetera, et cetera. So the plan is in place. So the plan is in place, the next slide will show you the URL. So now the boards of selectmen have to agree to put the warrant article, which is one sentence, on your annual town meetings, and it goes to vote here in the 11 communities, starting in a couple of weeks in Hampshire for those two towns, and then continuing through the middle of May. And if we're on board, it then goes to Congress and eventually the president to sign off on it.
You mean town meeting?
Town meeting.
Okay, you should probably capitalize "town meeting" or something, so people understand it's...
Yes, I hear you. The formal warrant for the formal town spring in 11 communities.
So if it doesn't pass all 11, what happens?
What National Park Service has been telling us is it's easier to remedy if it's a terminus community, because you just start it a little lower.
Okay.
Or end it a little lower.
Yeah.
If it's a middle community, we'll have to see.
Okay.
Pretty much will be up to Congresswoman Sogas to decide if she feels it's suitable.
I mean, why wouldn't this get passed?
I can't imagine why, but I did have us spend some time on what it does not do, because there will be people
Right.
Nonetheless, interpret this as
More suspicious.
It's the feds coming in.
Yeah.
It's just not the case, but that could be a perception that overwhelms town meeting as much as we've done all we can to outreach and to inform people as best we can.
So just speaking about the dam and the water chestnuts, like where would that money previously had come from if you wanted to, does that come from Pepperell?
We had been tapping into the state.
Okay.
That was probably seven years ago.
So instead of getting, because no town's owned a river, right? The river isn't owned by the state?
They own the midline, it's Pepperell, any rotten in there.
Oh, so they want the midline of the river, so the money would have to come from the state or this town?
They would be applying
Yeah.
For sources, it really is.
But now it would be federally money?
That would be a portion of it.
A substantial?
I don't see, I don't see the entire year's appropriation going to any one project.
Yeah, yeah.
If it was distributed amongst 11 communities. But it would certainly leverage.
Yeah, for sure.
And I think that is it. And here is the URL, wildandsenashualiversplural.org. It's all over on that website, once you get there, you will bump into the view stewardship plan if you so choose. It's a long document, and as I indicated earlier, you might do well if you had a short period of time, you know, you could skip the preambles, et cetera, et cetera, skip the appendices, go right to the action plan. So there's three ORRVs, biodiversity, recreational and scenic, and historical and cultural. And after each of those three sections, there's a fairly lengthy action plan.
So the Bolton flats is part of that?
Yes, it is, it's part, that's why you're here for the Bolton flats. That is exactly right.
So now there is like, you know, some houses, are there any?
It's quite a distance, certainly more than a quarter mile.
So if you get within a quarter mile, that's when?
There's, there's language in the act that speaks to a quarter mile, but we're kind of watershed wide, so we can even go, we can focus our monies on projects that are even upriver, like into the tributaries, if it had an impact.
What I'm saying though is like those houses along the flats, there would be no impact
No.
Regulation wise to them?
Correct.
And what, the Bromfield business there?
Yeah, there were, there's a Flats Mentor Farm in Lancaster that touches on Bolton.
Yeah, that seems like it's right in the flood area.
Sure is.
There's no impact to them?
No.
Yeah.
Hopefully we'll be able to work with them, I know they have some impacts from flooding, so maybe we could, you know, help. At this point then, you know, feel free to comment on it, though we have, as of, you know, 12 o'clock, we're kind of, we're done working on the plan, it's taken us three years, and we have to stop sometime.
Is someone from your group presenting this at town meeting in Bolton?
I'm hoping that it's going to be Rona and/or Rebecca, it would either be myself or Jamie, who's our National Park Service contact in the room, in case you allow us that there was a question, but it's not our intention to speak to it.
Okay.
And it's up to your time and attention, we might ask for a letter of support if you were, you know, and that would be further down the line after you get past that.
Can you issue that, right?
Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
All right, we're on schedule. Thought we'd be ahead of schedule, but not having this far. Okay, so, putting my desk, we're just kind of...
Absolutely.
You know, it's the plan board to discuss articles by 8:00 PM. So let's just jump right into the tier one stuff. So first of all, we, you know, I went before the board of selectmen to answer any questions when they went over the articles, and we mainly talked about this tier one. They had some questions about overlay, and some questions about business coverage, but Stan Wasaki in particular, he was very concerned that it wasn't really proper lead up or notice of the tier one stuff to the town, which I kind of agree with, I mean, because it did come up not, tier, we didn't even speak of tier one until December, when it was actually done by the state. And come to find out that it wasn't even properly noticed originally.
Right.
So we, you know, we said at that meeting that we would hold a public hearing just to get more of an outreach, but it turns out that we actually have to hold a public hearing.
Right.
According to town council, that properly notices that tier one. And I think that would probably be the 21st, is what I was saying?
Yeah, I mean, we're really short for time here, so...
Because the 22nd is when the warrant closes, so we want to be able to take any action on changing it or removing it, it used to be before the 22nd, so are we, you notice, you put in a notice for the 21st?
No, not yet, because the warrant hasn't deliberated.
Oh, okay.
I think you have several options, you could choose not to bring it forward, and you don't hold a public hearing, and therefore, you know, we work on it and bring it forward next year.
Well, that's, I was just going to say, one option we could is just bring the current bylaw that we have, we got this till next year.
Yep.
And just
Work with, yeah.
See what we can do, I mean, I'm just, it feels a little bit like a lot of some of this is being rushed.
Yeah, for sure.
I agree. The second option is, you know, the residents that are in favor of this could bring it forward as a citizen's petition.
Yeah.
We could, you know, certainly give them the language that we've cracked it up to date, and they could use that as, you know, and that could potentially be an option, or we obviously can hold the hearing, so.
Yeah, so, I don't know. One thing I definitely wanted to do, no matter what, well, I mean, I guess, even if we do it in the future, so I asked Erica to work on this survey, because we never really, we never really even asked the town about it.
And address, I mean, this, this, I'm completely fine with a survey, and I think what you're trying to do, but I think to put this out, to try to get everyone to do everything.
Yeah, it's a great time, it's very short.
I would just say, let's pass it till next year, and then we can have, put this forward, we can get some input from the town, not to say that they can't still do a citizen's petition, absolutely let them know if they can do that, they can do that, and we wouldn't stand in wait, but it just...
So the other thing I worry about is, it's so new, and, you know, I really feel like we'd be leading the way with this whole residential portion, I'd rather see somebody else do it first personally, just to see, let the law settle out, see what towns are doing it.
Oh, you mean if a different town's doing it, gotcha.
I mean, I don't know, I'm not sure I want to be the only one in the state, maybe Teresa can tell us, you know, if other people are passing this, or trying to pass the bylaw, but I haven't heard of any. And so I don't know that I want to be leading the way of, you know, allowing this in residential, you know, personally.
The other recommendation that Stan Wasaki made, which I thought was a good one, was to reach out to the farms, right? And actually ask them individually if this is something that they would be interested in pursuing, because if none of the farms are interested...
I mean, Teresa's here, did you guys talk to farms and see who would be interested?
We considered that, but we think that, you know, because of this is a hot button issue, I don't know that it's fair to any of the farms to ask them to say that they want to, they would be interested in it. I mean, what we're providing them is an opportunity, and whether they use it or not is up to them, but I don't think it's fair to them to put them in the limelight that, you know, that doesn't seem appropriate.
So is anyone else interested than the one resident?
There's one resident that's interested, yes.
I mean, one of the things I thought of after, you know, one of the things that resident said was, you know, a number of times, it's, the regulations are very prohibitive. In other words, no one's going to want to do this, right? No one's going to want to do it, it's not really going to make any money because of all the money you're going to have to invest. It's kind of more like a hobby, right? That's sort of the way she was, that was the way I heard she was pitching it, kind of from a, from the perspective of, that was what she was using to say this is not going to proliferate throughout the town.
Right.
So that kind of got me thinking, you know, a little bit after, is, okay, what, you know, what is the real use for the town, right? And what is it, you know, really good for the town if it's not something that's actually, you know, a lot of people are interested in doing? And maybe there's other people that are interested in doing it that we haven't heard from, but I don't know.
Yeah, so, I mean, just, just to get it on record, so on this survey, asked, would people, I said, do you think the town of Bolton should allow farmers and residents to operate as marijuana cultivation with tier one licenses in the residential district with no minimum lot acreage coverage, which is pretty much what we have now? This would allow farmers or residents to grow marijuana on the land from tier one? Then I said, question two is, if you answered no to question one, do you think that pretty much allow it on both of those, but have a minimum lot acreage of, say, five acres? So this would allow farmers and residents with five acres or more to grow? And then if you answered no to both of those, do you think that just existing farms or there's certain minimum acreage should be allowed a tier one license? And then I said, you added that last question, just to definitively say, do you want this? Yes and no, pretty much. Or do you want it not allowed? Yeah. But like Danielle was saying, I mean, we'd have to get the survey out, we have two weeks to get everything, and then
I think it's time.
Then we have to do this public hearing, and we're going to create a huge motion.
I feel that there's, there's a lot of information out there, there's a lot of stuff we're putting forward. I'm certainly, you know, not saying no to this, I just think the timing, because it needs to be
So rushed.
And it maybe by putting this off a year, maybe it will go through next year, because we'll have a year of the new bylaw, I don't know, I just, my personal feel would be to hold this, certainly they could have the option to do a citizen's petition, but I would, I would vote to hold this back.
Yeah, so, I know you care so much.
Yeah, I'm a resident, I live on 108 Teal Road and
What's your name?
Maria Schumaker.
Yeah.
And I recently found out about this, I was appalled that this was proposed for our town, and I'm doing more and more research about it, sorry.
Don't worry.
It's probably my son, and we're late again.
Or I see you on TV.
So, sorry, obviously I'm very, very much opposed to it, I think we'll bring down our values to our property, it opens the Pandora's Box of having every single resident to be able to cultivate marijuana in a space of 1,000 square feet. The way the bylaw is proposed, there would be no buffer zone, the buffer zone would be only 50 feet away, I understood it from my property line.
That's correct.
I have a farmer next to me, I wouldn't want to leave to somebody having farming this next to me, and honestly, I would move out of the town if that happens. There are lots of concerns about marijuana, it's still a controlled substance, I know that medicinal marijuana is the actual plant, I come from the pharmaceutical industry, so I just don't understand why this is even being brought up. It's so rushed, people do not understand anything about what it means tier one. Yesterday I went to another meeting, completely different topic, and somehow this was brought up, and nobody knew, they're like, oh, really? They're talking about marijuana, and what is tier one, and people are completely clueless. So I agree with you that I think even if, if you decide to propose something like that, it should not happen this year, because it will take a lot for people to understand, look at the Mass General Law, the Mass General Law currently does not allow tier one in residential areas, so there is a reason for that, right?
Well, you have, well, you have to locally zone it.
Right, so I think it's very rushed, I mean, the town meeting is in May, nobody knows about it, it hasn't been publicized, so residents understand, every resident I've talked to, they're like, what? Why would we do something like that?
Well, so we put out an initial survey, which didn't even mention this, because, I mean, we did talk about residential, because Teresa brought up that, you know, farms might be interested in, we know that farms are residential, so we talked about it, but we didn't want to include it in our bylaw, because we wanted, you know, we didn't want to have a controversial bylaw, we just wanted something simple that we knew would pass.
But people think of residential like a few plants, they're not thinking of 1,000 square feet.
Right.
It's like, it's a whole house.
250.
Yeah, and, and no matter what, I was looking at our government data, and a friend of mine, he, she's a district attorney, and she sent me some information, and the bottom line is, more people, now of course that it's legal, more people will have access to it, so more people will be using it, and we have kids, and not that they don't have access to these kind of things, but it will be even more available. And why do you do it in our town? It's just crazy, I think, I mean, personally, this is just me, I wouldn't go and buy a house to a town that is well-known for its marijuana farms, guess what's going to happen to our property values?
Yeah, I mean, that's my, I mean, I don't, I don't want to be, I don't personally want to be leading the way in this, you know.
Well, we have, I mean, we have to put a code of bylaw for it, because the town voted to approve.
No, no, I understand, this is
You're talking about just this tier one?
Tier one, I'm talking about, yes.
Yeah, because, just for everybody, anybody watching on camera, we're talking about residential, and that's not included in the original bylaw, because Mass's right to farm doesn't include marijuana. Whereas if they adjusted that on the state level, which I don't know where the state is on that, then it would be a different story. If it is allowed in the resident, then we would want to have a local zoning bylaw to, whether we set a minimum acreage or something, you know.
Yeah, we want to readdress our bylaw.
We want to readdress it. But the end that there is so many...
I've commented also, when you're ready.
Good.
I'm Tina Yell, I live at 111 Teal Road, and I've been in Bolton about 20 years, which is, I, I just want to agree with Maria that it seems very fast and we don't know anything about it. I don't believe I saw the survey that you mentioned, is that by email, or how does that happen?
It was, I was in Bolton, it was in the email.
Not this one, but the one
No, the previous one.
Two months ago.
But just without, I haven't had time to educate myself, and I think a year would be very helpful, but a couple of things that I may have wrong, because I haven't studied it, but I thought that tier one had to have some kind of a cover, and if the arrangement is 50 feet from the property line, and there's security requirements and lights and fences, is it, instead of driving around in the country and seeing apple, or did you go and see things that look like prisons? I mean, I don't know.
It'd be like a
I just don't know, because I haven't seen it.
Structure, I guess.
And, and what is, is there a retail component?
No.
I wouldn't want any retail in Bolton.
It's kind of like a wholesale kind of situation.
And then the other thing I want to have presented to the town is, is there any data that farmers on tier one are making any money? Because I think you guys were bringing up the question, why does Bolton want it? I can see people putting forward an argument that saving our farms, which are being paved over and turned into housing developments at an alarming rate, is a priority for a town like Bolton, but is this effective? Tier one is expensive, and it, it may not really be commercially viable, is there a market? Is there any data from other states?
I mean, this is just pass, we obviously can't have data on that right now.
What about Colorado, is there data from anywhere?
Yeah, I don't know what their regulations are.
So, so I'm, I'm just saying that I'm agreeing with what you said, that this is very fast, and it's a topic that most of us haven't had time to read 100-page documents and understand.
Yeah.
So I, totally in favor of Um, so I, I totally in favor of at least waiting a year and letting us, um, understand better, and to understand what's, what's in it for Bolton as an entire town, and is it really going to benefit farms if that's the motivation?
I asked Kate to come up with some rough numbers, and obviously, it's a rough number because there's so many variables, um, you know, to the amount of product you would get from a plant or not, and we have no idea what the wholesale price of it's gonna be, but as a minimum number, we're talking about ten thousand dollars back to the town.
Oh.
So, that's...
Wait, wait.
That's like the three, that's the three percent.
Back to the town from...
From the three percent.
From the host agreement?
From the local taxing.
So for a thou, for a thousand square foot...
Right.
Um...
For each thousand square foot...
You could potentially, the town could potentially get ten thousand dollars back...
For each one of these farms that was cultivating marijuana, that would bring back ten thousand dollars to the town.
What is that? I can't do the arithmetic, is that...
It's very, it's very variable, I don't want anybody to...
It's just a rough, a billion and a half.
Excuse me?
She's saying that would be three percent of, of the gross, so if you multiply it times thirty... Well, if you multiply it times thirty-three, so, it'd be like three hundred and thirty thousand, that's what they're saying.
Okay.
So the initial starter, of course, are expensive, but it is, it's a cash crop, that's the whole, that's the reason tier-one is tier-one, and we have four tiers, so that, and, and, you know, there's a hundred and pa, seven pages of security.
Yeah.
It's very unlikely this is going to introduce it to our neighborhood children, this is a very self-contained, um, given that everyone in town is entitled to have twelve plants in their house.
Twelve or six?
Twelve.
Six per adult.
Six per adult, twelve per house.
Twelve per household.
Yeah, that's a big, another issue, but not one for plantings per view, per se. I mean, that, that is, my bigger concern, frankly, is that there are no regulations on those plants.
Yeah, I mean, my concern is...
This is a small business opportunity in Bolton.
There's just a big difference between twelve and two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, I mean, my...
Also not, it's, there's a hundred and seven pages of security.
Yeah, no, and I get that, yeah.
But still, so my big concern is definitely the security, but also, you know, resale value if your neighbor, you know, builds it, you know, and, and if you didn't move next to that. So it's one thing if you kinda move right next to a working farm, and it's some farm thing, but if you're in a neighborhood, and all of a sudden, somebody's building that, I mean, I know you say that, well, the impact will be minimal, but people will know it's there, and it couldn't hurt resale value, so I think it hurts, hurts people. But, but, but overall, overall, I just, I, I agree with everybody here, and I talked to Mark, and he kinda said the same thing, Mark Sprague, he talked to me, gave me his opinion, um, is, we, um, it's just very rushed, and we just got, we just got it in December.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't wanna be the first town personally to do this, I wanna see the law settle.
I'd also like to get the town's input on this.
I'd like to get, and we could do this, yeah, I think this would be good to do through the year to...
I'd like to get some feedback from the town.
But, but the moving parts that we'd have to go through to get this done, get this compiled, get the public hearing, I just think it's too many moving parts for this year, and we have so many big bylaws that we want passed, that I don't think we need the baggage that springs.
The, the state regulations are still draft, right?
I'm thinking it's two weeks.
It'll be in March or April, yeah.
That's when they become known.
So I think, if the board agrees with me here, then I would take a motion to pull it. One, one last thing.
So, Teresa Sauer, I'm the chair of the Agriculture Commission, I gotta say, we're really disappointed, we're really disappointed, I mean...
Well, you can do a citizen's petition.
This is, I'm not, this, this, this came out December twenty-first, the draft regs, they're about to finish them off, it's definitely not to anybody's advantage to wait if you wanted to get into this business, so you would be a wholesaler, all of your mark, you'd have to find a market for your product, the, the best way to get into this market would be to do it right at the get-go, and so, that's something you guys haven't even considered.
Well, there are things, but, oh, sorry, one thing, I mean, it takes two-thirds to get this to pass, which I think you know is gonna be really difficult.
I personally am also getting very positive feedback about this, so...
But I think, I think you would have even, if you rush this, and people think it's rushed, they're gonna be scared of it, I think, if you really want this passed, you, you need like, a lot of public education, you need a lot of run-up to it, and I think the second somebody feels like something's being rushed on them, or, uh, you know, it's, it's being pushed on them, that people will just reel back from it, I think, I think the best way to get this passed would be to really get the survey out there, see what the town, you know, we were gonna have like a two, two-week, uh, date on it, just to get the data back, but that might not be enough time, I mean, just a really long-term survey, educational, I mean, you know how a town meeting is, I mean, it's, if there's anything in doubt, it's not gonna pass, I mean, so, and I think you hurt your chances in the future of it passing by it.
What are the repercussions of waiting a year?
Either markets are already set up, I mean...
But if it's wholesale, it's not like you're a retailer, or a, a big business coming in, I mean, if it's just, you know, somebody's gonna do a whole, you know, a wholesale thing and sell into somebody's bigger crop, or bigger purchase, I can't imagine that, you know?
Why wouldn't all the farms already be, um, raising this issue if they were interested in jumping on the bandwagon so, so quickly? We haven't heard, if I, I may have misunderstood, I'm sorry, it sounds like there's one person that's proposing this, not a, not fifty farms?
Right.
Right.
So, they don't seem to be that concerned about the timing.
And I, I looked, I, I've been doing a little bit of research, I'm educating myself, there is not a lot of data about marijuana, and Massachusetts just passed, so, there are lots of questions in general, so I, I think we need more time to understand, um, the whole, this whole topic.
I mean, the one thing I was just gonna say, this is an amendment to the bylaw, we still have to get passed, right? So it's, it's like, we don't even know if the, the bylaw's gonna pass, and we're, we're talking about the amendment, and, you know, as I mentioned in the last meeting, I, I feel like, having this out there is gonna sour, just getting the original bylaw passed.
Are you kidding? You know how many more people are talking about this than we're talking about it before? Come on.
Thank you, any thoughts?
No, I agree, I mean, I think, um, I think we work on doing it, I wouldn't even be opposed to having it, having something ready for if we had a special town meeting.
So my understanding are, is there are other towns that are, that are pushing to have this happen, so I don't think Bolton's the only one looking at this, so...
I, I would, I would, uh, make a motion to pull it.
Yeah, I, I'll make a motion to pull it, um, from the...
Article fourteen, I believe it is.
Article fourteen.
So, is that the right, do we see that right?
Um...
Or should we not go with the number?
Well, it's not even on the warrant, because you need to have a public hearing to put it on the warrant.
So do I make a motion not to put it on, or...
Yeah, let's do it that way.
All right, I'll make a motion.
Not to hold a hearing and put it on, I'll stay with that.
Not to make a, not to hold a public hearing for the tier-one amendment, and not to move it forward for this year.
So...
On paper?
All right.
unanimous? And that's that? One here. Thank you for trying, no, we're all...
Well, I can say, considering it's a public area, I think the survey, we can just push off.
I agree with you, but we're going way too much.
Yeah, no, I mean, I was gonna say, let's, let's get through.
How else do we have to do this?
Uh, yeah, so we can just...
So, I...
Put that survey out, that's all.
Oh, no, 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 we don't have that.
Thank you all for the night, yeah, thank you.
There was a question last night about, um, whether, whether or not the local option tax applied to more than just the retail, and it was not, it's only retail.
Okay.
So we can only get three percent?
Yeah, because I've got on record.
So we can only get three percent on growth facilities, we can't get six percent?
Correct.
Yeah. So, then you leave the word retail?
I think that was really the only, let's see, let me just go through my check, that was the only change in marijuana.
So on presentations, what are you looking at, is that it?
I think that's it, yeah.
So I have the slides, um, I think I'm gonna present the overlay and the coverage.
Where's the list of, the ones, do we have the list?
Of what?
Of the articles that we need to present?
Just in here.
I don't have that, sure.
Yeah, yeah, whatever you need.
Unless it's a spray, then I'm not sure.
Uh, if, if people are okay with me presenting that.
So you said, I'm sorry, you said the overlay?
Yeah, the coverage, that's what I was gonna do, you can do the part, and then Mark is gonna do it, that doesn't leave you guys with anything, I don't know if you're okay with that, uh, just, I was kinda, I kinda wanted to group the overlay and coverage, cuz I was gonna, if the board was okay with me presenting, uh, those, that little study I did about where we stand, residential tax base, and it wouldn't be all the, all the charts, it would just be the first two, where I show the tax levy, and what our residential, you know, so pretty much, even though, say, to some other towns, we're paying similar taxes, the fact that, you know, for every dollar, we have to pay eighty-six cents out of that, it just means, even if we're paying similar taxes, other towns are actually getting a bigger overall budget, you know, so they're getting, it's easier to get...
If they're paying the same taxes.
Right, you know, so, you can't just look at that number, so I was gonna put those in there, and then dovetail that into the...
And those two articles are back-to-back, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And so, and I've got parking, and that's it, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I don't know if you, maybe one slide or two slides?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, three, you might not even need it.
And the village overlay?
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
So, three?
Yeah, I mean, that was, I don't even say much for, really.
Yeah.
Oh, so you're doing the cottage overlay too, okay.
Yeah, I definitely wanna do the cottage overlay, I'd like to do the coverages, but I don't know, just one of you guys who really wanted to get up there and speak.
And then there's marijuana.
And then I think Mark is gonna do it.
Oh, awesome, I'll sit in a minute.
And that's it, right?
I think that's it, yeah.
Okay.
So what do you need my assistance with? I know Mark wants to create a couple of figures for the recreational marijuana, I know you've already started your slides.
I started my slides, I'll take...
If you can share, yeah, I was gonna say, can you share?
Yeah, I'll send them out.
Just cuz I'm, I might have, I'll just look at the one or two for parking and go from there.
Uh, yeah, I'll definitely send them out.
Easy.
Do you need me to create any figures, or whatever?
Your updated diagram would be great, so...
Oh, okay, good, that's good enough for you, okay.
Yeah.
So that's...
And you're not gonna be there for the big show.
I know.
Yeah.
I'm really, I'll have to watch it after, after that fact.
You'll be, you'll be a little busy.
I'm interested to see how the people react.
There it goes.
Yeah.
So, to get into schedule, um...
Oh, okay.
What do we have for, so this hearing closed, this one was pulled, are we anticipating any new hearings on the fourteenth?
Not on the fourteenth.
Okay, cuz I won't be, uh, I'll be in Norfolk on the fourteenth.
Okay.
And, I think I should hopefully close that one.
What?
So, I'm just trying to think, I have a bunch of permits going in, but I think that for the third Wednesday on the twenty-first, they won't conflict with any...
Well, so now we don't have to do the whole twenty-first thing?
Right, we'll keep it to the twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
Which is, I wouldn't mean it anyways.
Yeah.
I, I live in, I have four things that I, I don't know what is, March twenty-first, apparently it's a very popular name.
So, yeah...
Get stuff done before the...
We'll just frame, start with the fourteenth and twenty-eighth.
Okay, I can make the twenty-eighth.
And then...
But, will, will Ja, will James be on board by that?
Yeah, 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 he'll be on the fourteenth.
So, technically, we're not gonna have any hearings for the fourteenth, and in terms of business items, I mean, anything that you need to sort of wrap up on the articles, that's about it, um, for right now. So do you not have a meeting and wait till the twenty-eighth?
I mean, if there's nothing to come forward, then, then follow that, you know, see, see what happens, and...
At some point, I anticipate a, a special permit coming forward for a dock channel, so that'll be the first one.
Oh, wow.
So that'll be probably another response.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah.
Do we have that in our parking schedule?
No, I think, I think we do.
I think we do, too.
We have a fair amount in the schedule.
Century Mill Estates will be coming forward, um, Fred Kuhn is, and actually Andy, they're both gonna be on vacation for the fourteenth, so they're gonna come in on the twenty-eighth. I've asked them to give us an update on construction schedule for the road completion, because the board has given it to your extension back in two thousand and sixteen, it expires this June.
Yeah.
Um, their permits have expired, so I've actually reached out to town council, cuz I think, and we need some guidance on how to permit this development moving forward.
Fred keeps talking about, they were gonna blast, they're gonna blast, but it's just never happening.
Yeah, so, um, I'll...
I was hearing rumors about Century Mill, like...
I get calls every week from res, very upset residents that live there, so...
Well, but I was hearing that, like, Andy was, like, getting out of it, and...
I, I don't know, it's...
Like, all these rumors come to me.
I mean, that's, I, I go by what they're telling me, and...
What are the residents complaining about?
They're all that concerned, they're concerned, but he's gonna pull, and they're not gonna finish the road, and it's a private road right now, they won't have to plow it, it's, you know?
So, two separate Century Mill residents said that they thought that Andy was, you know, gonna abandon that road, or, you know, so they had some agreement.
I've heard a lot of things, it's like, but it's because it's sort of hearsay, I don't, you know, I haven't heard it directly from Andy.
It's the same thing I'm hearing.
I don't like to talk about it, but, um, I, I think it's a good idea, we need to get him in here, we need to start talking about next phase, because Bolton Circle's pretty much done, so, um, and then obviously, town council's from a legal standpoint, what do we need to do?
What would happen if he abandoned, abandoned China?
They have bond in place.
What's it, phase two?
Phase one and three haven't been done yet.
Phase one, cuz phase...
And phase three are completely different owners, he doesn't actually own that property.
What's, which one's phase three?
Phase three's in the middle, so that connects from where they've ended Mill Pond Road, and then where they're gonna come in from Century Mill Road.
Yeah.
Okay, so, that's really it.
Anything else to do? We have to sign?
Just sign stuff, so, I have, um, instead of needing minutes for approval, I think I have to, I apologize, I finished the last minute, I don't think I have something to do yet, um...
This one?
Yep.
We each have one?
You each have one, and I have one to sign.
Which day is it?
This was January tenth.
Okay, so January, and then we need to sign. And we just initial?
Uh, yep.
Just do, just one of them.
Yep. This may take a little bit of time, Mark's already signed. So if you wanna like split some of it up, if you wanna do it that way, maybe just take a couple.
Do I have to date it, or just sign it?
Um, this?
Yeah, oh, you dated it at the top, or is that not gonna...
Oh, yeah, I can date it, if you wanna just sign it on the top.
Okay.
Put the top maybe, I don't know.
Yeah. This is quite a detailed, this is very detailed, Erica.
I don't know why that one became so detailed, in the future, I'm trying not to do that, cuz it's taking way too much time.
Yeah, you can cut it down, for sure, cut it down and try to get the backlog.
Well, thank you, everybody, you guys, you guys are signing this pretty much, right?
Thank you, yeah. Well, we'll work.
Thank you, thank you, I'd like to contribute so, uh, see you on the fourteenth?
Fourteenth or.
I will see, potentially the twenty, depending if there's not, no business.
And that's all, that's, that's all emailed out from the.
Yep, and I will include you now, looking forward.
All right, thank you, everybody, take care.
Right, I'm gonna.
Thank you.
Can you sign all this?
Yeah. My machine.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
I'm thinking, second.
On paper?
You're scared, jump on that.
Slip it in.
I know.
So, so they can do a citizen's petition to amend a bylaw that doesn't exist?
Um, only if that's been passed, and they can do it on the floor.
I see, yeah, yeah.
Well, no, but they'd have, they'd have to, no, they have to submit it.
Oh, really?
That's a good question, 'cause they.
I thought that, I thought that they could do it on the floor.
Well, they could ask to amend that particular bylaw on the floor.
Okay.
Which would be really.
Well, we'd have to, you know. 'Cause that would make it fail then.
Yeah.
Well, the amendment itself would probably fail.
Yeah, they need fifty percent, I don't think they get that. Yeah, because all this is, we have cameras, go on, we adjourned.
We're closed, what do we do?